All right, any need for executive?
No.
I have none.
Um, any need to amend the agenda? I realize I made a mistake last meeting. I amended the agenda so that we could vote for me to be the voting delegate and we never did it. So let's try this again.
Actually, yes.
Did we?
Yes. During the discussion of it, they voted.
Okay.
And we could do it that way? We didn't have to wait until...oh, okay.
Okay.
Then...
Because it wasn't a listed agenda item.
All right, awesome.
It was an amendment.
Okay, great. Thank you.
She keeps us straight.
I know. Thank God for Kelly. Um, and then, I don't know what anyone else thinks if we want to table the policies till Dave is here. I know because he's the one that had asked for the comparisons and to see the...so is that okay to table that till next meeting? Everybody okay with that?
Not that urgent, really.
Yeah, okay.
We can talk, I don't know. We can talk about it, but...
Yeah, okay. Um, that's all I had. Does anyone have anything? Do we have a motion then for...to adopt the amended agenda?
So make a motion.
I'll make...oh, you're making the motion? Second, all in favor say aye. Aye. All right, anything of the meeting minutes of September 21st? Okay. Um, and then we'll go back...we'll actually...we'll deal with the minutes of August 24th. We still had an issue with that, so...um, anything on the orders?
I noticed that the police ammo was eleven hundred and twenty-six dollars. Gosh, that seems like a lot of money for...can't believe they...
Yeah, well, there needs to be another...just an adjustment.
There's a lot of this for...
Yeah.
Practice recreational purposes on their part, or they're not shooting at people that much, I don't think.
No, I don't think they are, Joe. But they do...I don't know how often they practice.
The one that was getting trained, so...
Oh.
Talking about the ammo, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I saw that, too.
Yep.
I think the comment was made by the chief that there was one member that was getting trained.
Oh, okay.
Well, I'm sure it takes quite a bit, but...
Remember, last year, this same topic came up?
Yeah.
And he allows the officers to practice...
They bought some of their own.
And then they pay the town for it.
Oh, I do remember that.
But I don't know if that's part of this one or not.
I don't either, but...
No, but yeah, that's...thanks for reminding us of that. I do remember that.
Yeah.
What did I have? Can't see. Oh, so I guess that's...now I'm trying to...so this seventeen oh eight, is that police online training? It just says pole online. I'm guessing it was for six hundred.
Lexa pole.
Yeah, Lexa pole.
I got that one circled, too.
Yeah.
Six hundred dollars online training. The seventeen oh eight vendor number.
It's marked for police, so I assume that's...
Well, that's what I...I wasn't...yeah. Sometimes the abbreviations get me, you know?
Seventeen oh eight's the dollar amount?
No, no.
No, it's the vendor number.
Vendor number. Let's see, a six hundred even.
Google says Lexa pole provides public safety policy and training solutions along with a wellness app for public safety and local government.
Hmm, okay.
What do you say it's six hundred dollars?
Vendor's in the dollar line.
Of course it is.
This one?
No, the bottom one.
One. One.
It's not there. There's one here for six hundred dollars. Yeah, but I'm looking for...I'm looking for this. And I can't find that sheet. What's the name of the vendor?
Lexa pole.
I don't know.
Should be right after Keith stuff. I don't know if that'd help you.
Annual subscription to the JPMa Online Training Center for Law Enforcement Course Package. Six hundred dollars.
Okay.
Quantity of eight, at seventy-five dollars each.
That's each officer, then.
Oh, okay.
We gonna pull that slip for the ammo, too, or do you just wanna...
I would check it because we don't know what it is.
So what is...
AAAA Police Supply.
That's right on top.
Yeah.
So that was the Agila ammo, quantity of two, five hundred and sixty-three each. And this was...he did tell me that they were gonna do this because of supply issues.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so just...
They're having a hard time.
Hard time getting it.
Yeah.
All right.
He was told they were gonna have an issue, so he wanted to get it while they had it.
Okay.
This other one for Engineering Ventures PC, it's labeled West Creek.
Yep.
Ten twenty-seven oh seven.
Yeah, that's okay, because that was prior to the issues.
Okay, so that wasn't the...
That should be the last one.
That wasn't the...okay.
No, that should be the last bill.
Okay.
No, I...I looked at that one.
That's all I had. Does anyone...
I have one question on Brown's auto salvage.
Friend, that was the separate one that was...
Oh, was it? Oh. The Durango engine?
Right there.
Okay.
It's for the engine. It's on the cruiser.
Yeah, but it's...we got a remand engine from Browns?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, the police car.
Yeah, I remember where that...
Yep.
I just didn't know that we got it from Browns. I thought it was probably from elsewhere.
Nope. This is the workup.
And that was a reman?
Yeah, this is the details.
I'm just gonna glance over it.
Sure.
Keep going. Three-year, hundred thousand warranty.
Okay. Oh, I guess we should sign the...or send the orders down while you start that.
The twenty-fourth, are you gonna do something with that?
Yeah, Kelly and I need to...there's just a detail in there that we need to...
Do you want me to leave it aside for you?
I mean, it's basically...we have to rewrite it.
Yeah, okay, all right, all right. I just don't know what I was supposed to do with it. So there's all that.
Tox it, I suppose.
Okay. So, the Route Seven paving project. The last update I had on that, I had this information today from a woman that has kind of been working along with the state. She's kind of like the middle person between Hutchins and the state.
Yep.
And I think they're finished with us, which I wasn't happy to hear, because I still feel like things were kind of left a little bit in disarray. So I'm not really very happy with the way things were left. I'm still not finished with that discussion. I think I'm still gonna reach out and have another discussion about that. But as far as I am aware, that they're finished with the driveway entrances and that sort of thing, the major work, that...that's where they're leaving it. The ordinances, you have those that were...you're still gonna review.
Yep.
I had a phone conversation with Craig Jewett regarding the completion of the drawings for the Route Seven corridor through the northern portion of town. It's something that we kind of touched on at the last meeting. So what he said he's gonna do is he's gonna draft a preliminary plan for you folks, and once he gets to that point, then schedule a formal meeting where he'll come in and talk to you.
Okay.
And go over that, and he'll give you like a cost analysis and everything, so that you can have all the information at one time. He anticipates that he'll have all that information for you, like at the end of this month, maybe beginning of November timeframe. Ann and I met with a VLCT rep regarding CDL licensing and the proper formatting of that for the...for us and what we're supposed to have on file here regarding that. And currently, we're really not in compliance. So we kind of got our hands slapped a little bit, but they're not going to make anything formal.
Okay.
Because we reached out to them, knowing that we really don't have everything we're supposed to, and we're going to do that now.
Okay.
So Ann was very diligent about getting on board, and we're gonna get what we need to get done.
Great.
I met with the Lothrup School about that grant opportunity.
It's Melanie, by the way, not Marilyn.
I'm sorry.
Just so you know.
Melanie. I apologize about that. I met with her, and I also met with the representative from AOT. And unfortunately, they have a plan that they want us to follow, and I don't think it will include what we would like it to include. So I don't think that particular opportunity we'll be able to do. But I'm still gonna look at another avenue.
Great.
I haven't given up yet on that. I had a budget kickoff session today. I started that with a couple of the departments, with fire and public works or highway. But I have another one scheduled for tomorrow with the other departments at nine-thirty in the morning to go over their budgets. So we've started that process, and they filled out their forms and that sort of thing. They're excited this year, because they're looking forward to meeting with you guys. They're gonna have backup documentation with their budgets to show you cost and all that, and what they're looking for, and why. So that...that's already begun. You already know about the police vehicle being rebuilt, because you saw the bill.
[laughing]
Let's see, the Zoom meeting with the committee unable to vote...oh, yeah, the committee on the...the CUD. I hate saying that name.
Communication, whatever district.
I hate saying the CUD committee, but the broadband. They were gonna hold a vote at the last meeting, but they couldn't because there was no quorum. So they still haven't held a vote to choose. And I think they're gonna end up with a split vote anyway, because it appears that one particular provider is gonna be able to provide one form of the service, and the other provider is gonna be able to provide another form of the service, services that people want.
For the fiber optics.
Yeah.
Is there a timeline on that? I mean, seems like this is...
Do you know?
Really not.
It's kind of...
It's not moving.
Yeah, and it's kind of...
What's that, Butch?
I think it's twenty-twenty-six on the statewide funding.
Ah.
Yeah, it's always a...
Wow.
Yeah. It's not a real aggressive process.
And a lot of it's just because Abe can't get anybody into the work. I think it's a heck of a lot of money to be spent over a period of time, so the idea was let's not stretch it out to not have an end, but to stretch it out so it's a realistic time to manage the money going out.
In the meantime, everybody's getting Starlink. By the time they get this up and running, no one's gonna even want it.
I thought originally they were fairly aggressive with that way they would do it. Am I wrong with that, or no?
No, you're not. You're not wrong with that, but then we got huge chunks of money coming in from the federal government, who were called really funny, ARPA funds.
Mm-hmm.
And now in the new IIJA Act, which is a...
Infrastructure Act. That's the amount, I hope, is getting around eleven billion dollars out of that over the last... Eleven billion?
I take two-point-one billion, over five years. So there's big chunks of money coming in of that funding that's in that. About seventy percent is for transportation, the other thirty percent is for broadband and mass transit and some of those things. So it's a lot...it's a long time spent. If you order a mass transit bus today, EV, which they're buying, there's a three-year buyout, yeah. That's the EBS or if you...and I see a shake head. If you're gonna spend...if you're gonna spend that money, it has to be on an EV bus. Yeah, no, it's crazy.
That is crazy.
All right. Thank you. So the last two things on my Talk About list here is we're all struggling with the phone system here.
Okay.
At Town Hall. A few of the other departments are gonna be writing letters to you folks, letting you know how much we're struggling with the phone system here. We're hoping that you will allow us to upgrade the phone system sometime soon.
What are the specifics on the struggles with the phone system?
There...it's extremely outdated. We lose calls, we don't have caller ID, it's antiquated, there's delays in when the messages show up on our phones. Sometimes I'll get a message days after someone calls me. All of a sudden, my light will light up days later. People will say they left me a message. I do check my messages all the time, and I do call people back on a regular basis, but sometimes I won't get it on a regular basis. It's weird how it happens, and it's not just me, it's everybody. But Helen I know is gonna draft a letter, Jen has drafted a letter, so it's not just me, it's everyone. So that's some of that. And then the other is the town's website provider has sold it, our website, so we no longer have the same provider, he sold it to another company. So I'm not certain what's gonna happen with that. I'm not sure what kind of service we're gonna have. I don't know what we're gonna be able to touch or not touch. The jury's out. We'll see what happens.
Is there a point where they're gonna let you know?
Well, supposedly, we're supposed to be able to still do a certain amount of things, but you know how that goes. We have to see.
Nothing stays the same when it comes to...
That's correct.
No.
So we gotta see.
Well, I'm wondering if it might get better, speaking on the positive side.
I don't think...I don't think it'll get better. We may have like status quo, but I don't think it'll get better.
Now, they're no longer servicing...if you send something to updates@pittsburghvermont.com, they're no longer doing the updates. It's being redirected to me.
Oh, really?
They are gonna have it outsourced to someone that used to work for them, that is now gonna become an independent contractor, and we'd have to hire them to do it. So in order to cut that expense, we opted for those emails to come to me, and I'm the one that's uploading everybody's agendas and minutes and everything onto the website and trying to keep the website updated, because it was unclear how the process was gonna work if we didn't choose that.
We figured it would be better to at least have control and know that we're at least have the data. Especially because we're bound by law to have our minutes and everything posted, so at least we know we've got that much control. But we're not certain how long this is gonna go on. We may have to do something. We did reach out locally. You had mentioned to try to reach out to some of these universities. They're not getting back to us. What we're finding out is they are overwhelmed with people wanting to utilize them for services. They do...
Universities?
Yeah.
No, the tech center.
Tech centers.
Yeah.
Well, there's so many people that want those services that they don't even need any more people using them. It's...you know, it's not as easy as it might seem to get tech people cheap.
Yeah.
Wasn't Rutland using an independent contractor? Didn't we have that discussion?
We did, and she...
Did we ever speak to that person?
I reached out, I never heard back.
Never heard back.
No.
Seems to be a trend.
I know, right?
Nobody wants to do it.
No.
Don't want to call back, do they?
No.
My commerce projects on my desk, but I've been waiting for calls back. Brenda and I were going over them before the meeting tonight.
Yeah. It's...it is a trend. And it seems like the...like you'll have a handful of people that want to work and do good, and they work to death. You know? But that's all I have.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any select board member remarks? Any public comment? Nope.
I guess I'd say that I took the time, took a ride across the new culvert that we put in.
Yeah.
Looked pretty darn nice to me.
Nice, yeah.
I did, too.
I was over there patching up along the...
Right.
That particular time, but it was good.
Yeah.
At the same time, I did. I did the same thing.
I did. I went over, too.
Oh, I do...I did have one question. On the south side of it, there's rock and dirt exposed. Is that gonna get some hay on it or something...something to hold it, so it doesn't wash away? Once you get beyond the culvert, they put some rock there and built that up.
Mm-hmm.
I noticed there was nothing there holding it, the dirt and the rock there. I didn't know if we should throw some rice seed down or some straw along there or something.
We could put some more down.
What, think you should inquire with Chad? If you could, just ask Chad if he thinks it'd be better?
Yeah.
Because that's on the side towards the water. That's where you're gonna get...
Right, right.
Yeah, I can do that.
It's a steep drop, so...
Yeah, I can do that.
Might be worth to throw something there, just so it doesn't all run away.
Absolutely. I can reach out and do that.
But it did look good.
Yep.
I had one more thing, and I almost forgot. I did need to get some sort of a vote or consensus from you folks on the insurance plan.
Oh, okay.
That I do...I did need. I have a deadline on that.
Okay.
When's the deadline, Brenda?
I have to notify them this month.
Okay.
All right, one other thing that I have to mention is driving up and down Route Seven, the high sidewalks through town are in damn tough shape.
They sure are.
God, I can't believe the shape that's in.
They're awful.
And of course, the highway crew, a lot of people have been fixing the waters, doing some maintenance work, which had to be done, and that probably didn't add to the beauty of it.
No, well, they look terrible.
But apparently, it's not possible to get anybody to do anything this year. That's my understanding.
Okay.
And there's no...the thought went through my mind, and I'm probably way off, but it's too bad that somehow or other, our highway crew couldn't...is there any way of hiring a machine or a small paper so that they could do anything to patch up some of the worst of it?
Did we talk about it?
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
We talked about that, what, a couple months ago?
Right, because it is getting done in the spring now.
In the spring, we're gonna do it.
And then Chad is going to whatever...
Whatever he needs to do to sort of get it done.
Yeah, he's gonna, you know, tear up the old stuff.
There was a problem getting some of the equipment, and Chad really didn't wanna...we talked to him about that.
Yeah.
And he did.
Pretty sure we did.
I think he's got a plan.
They got so much on their plate that...
Yeah, I think he has a schedule.
Yeah.
He did go over that.
He's gonna try to get them ready, and that's Sean's doing that with the water stuff, getting those...
Right, right.
Does he have to level them out a little bit for snow?
Yeah, there's some of the stuff he's gotta do.
Seems to be out of range, I'm saying that.
Yeah.
Looks to me like if they go to get a little snowstorm, they go to plow that, they're gonna...
It's been like that way for years.
They're gonna tear that sidewalk in places, they'll throw it all over the place.
I know.
I think he's following behind...he's been following behind Sean. I think they have a plan on that.
They do.
Hopefully, in the spring, we'll get it done, next spring. Yeah. May.
Really?
May's the plan with Wilk.
Yeah.
Bad-looking situation.
We're booked in with them?
We're booked in, yeah.
We are.
Yeah.
We just gotta get through one this winter.
You just gotta get through the winter, Joe, and hopefully, that's the next...
Pray for a late, late season.
So I guess we should have amended the agenda to have Ann talk about the ordinances. Well, maybe let's have her talk about it briefly now in public comment?
I can.
You can.
We put before you guys three tonight. I'm still working on a slew of them popping on. I've been working with different departments. The three you have tonight, coin drop purchasing policy and delinquent tax policy. Coin drop policy is all new. I was looking through different towns around us to see what they had for policies, and I remembered the conversation you guys had when one came right before it was happening. And this actually was based off from Fair Havens. I changed it slightly. But Fair Haven had a policy. The purchasing policy, the one that you guys have, is in place where it's black. The red is what we'd like to change, and a lot of it is just dollar limits.
Yeah.
It hasn't been changed probably in twenty to thirty years, I think. And the problem is like now, as I was telling Joe when he walked in, if I wanna buy four cases of toilet paper, technically, somebody needs to sign off on that, because I don't have signing authority for four cases of toilet paper.
Yep, okay.
And the delinquent tax policy, we've never had one here, according to Helen, not a written document. So I took three different towns, and I kind of pieced them together. I didn't go as harsh as some towns, but I didn't go as lenient as others. I work with the delinquent taxes all the time. I know what we have in this town for delinquent taxes, and I was trying to be flexible, but we have some really old ones that the policy that we've been running off on, which is just kind of like a handed-down verbal policy, would make it so that we could never collect from certain people, because we'll never reach the thousand-dollar threshold.
Okay.
They're small. So that's why I have the word "or" in there, you know, five hundred dollars or two or more years, because some of these are fifteen years old, and it would take until they're forty-five or fifty years old before they hit a thousand dollars.
Right, okay.
And at that point, you know, it's just a lot of extra paper every month.
Yep, okay.
And I'm currently working on heights and weights, speed, CDL ones, there's a variety of other ones. I'm just chipping away at finding ones we've had and trying to update them. And I am researching the heights and weights ones. I've met with Chad, I've met with Chief, Angie's read them, and they've been giving me feedbacks to that one. We're fixing a little bit because of Amia's entranceway and everything. We've had to put actual lengths of road for the weights, because some of it is eighty thousand, and then it switches to twenty-four thousand pounds. So we're trying to get all the details in there, so that when you guys get it again, it should be accurate for the roads that are here in town.
Okay, great.
Thank you for that. When you're looking at that, legislature passed new policies for covered bridges this year.
Yep, we know.
And it's in the statute, and it requires some signing and all that. AOT is ready to assist with that.
And they have nothing on their website yet, because I check it weekly. So I'm just waiting.
If you have any questions with AOT, you should talk to me.
Yeah.
Because I can smooth things over fairly quickly with AOT.
I saw you do that.
Yeah, like a day. And so...
We're just waiting for those statutes to hit on the website, but they have...
Are you going to?
Yeah, I need them.
I can get them for you.
Okay.
We've had some problems with covered bridges in other parts of the state.
Yep, absolutely.
That's what I've seen on the news.
Yep.
And I guess the state is, have they made some changes to kind of help these towns?
Yep, they have Joe.
That's what I understand.
What the, what the, quick overview of the language that's, that's now in statute gives the town the authority to post the bridges. The height, for example. Wait. How does it to correct posting most of your bridges are 16,000, the covered bridges? And I think that's the, pretty much the standard statewide. And also requires the town to put up certain signs, like, that are legal signs, to say turn around here or, you know, bridge so high ahead and those type of things. And it also requires, requires the town to post those limits within your ordinances that, on, on each bridge. But then it gives you the authority to go after anybody that damages a bridge. And it gives you the authority that I think the fine is 1,500 dollars first offense if you're, if you go through a oversight struggle or a real trouble.
Okay.
And then, then you can collect damages on top of that.
I think there was, some town put up steel girders to-
Yeah.
To make barricades so they couldn't get to the bridge.
Yeah, you can't do that. You can't do that. And then another town-
That's kinda cruel.
Yeah.
They got some attention out of that.
Yeah, but that's about a $10,000 fine. You can't do that either. Statutes were updated. We really did a lot of work on, on the Route 108 from Stowe to Cambridge. And only got like six or seven trucks so far this year caught up in there, so that did a lot of good. Yeah, there's some of that. And I'll get you, I can get you an updating.
So, Alicia, the coin drop and the purchasing policy look fairly straightforward to me. There's not a lot of stuff in here and I, I don't know if it's worth tabling them along. I think it's something we could act on tonight. The other ones, I think the tax collection and some of these other ones, we, we should have, you know, Dave here to look at too. Cause it's a little more new than that. The other ones are pretty straightforward.
The others?
And I wonder if we should just act on these so we can get through, get through these two. Well, there's really not-
I mean, I still had some issues with the coin drop one honestly. And I know some of the ones were, was the same language that Dave had, like the lottery piece. I mean, I think Labor Day is too short, probably Columbus Day is a good weekend for coin drops, you know? So probably, you know, so a six month period without more than one a month instead of just calling it four, I think. And then eight, I mean, the certificate of insurance, that goes to the state anyways, that's not-
She wanted to write down what you didn't like.
We can change it, that's fine.
Yeah.
I just needed suggestions on how you want to change it, cause I, I don't know until you tell me what needs to be changed. I just took the one from Fairhaven.
Yep.
Changed it a little bit and said that you guys could tell me what you want in here and I can easily change it and then bring it to your people at another meeting.
I think we'd still wanna copy it for certificate of insurance, even if it was going to the state just for our record.
I mean, yeah, that's fine, I'm just, some of that's, yeah, I mean-
What was the other one you were concerned about, the dates?
The dates, um, three and four. Cause we've done, who's, was it the fire department you do Columbus Day weekend?
We do.
Libraries.
No, libraries, the library does-
But yeah, I mean, I definitely think through Columbus Day weekend would be important.
We, we have normally what, the fire department, the library.
Humane Society and Sarah Stories. That's, they're fairly new with how, yeah.
And then you did American Cancer Society.
Yeah. So I mean, I think, I think that instead of just saying four, I mean, I just think if we want a month and over a six month period, that way for anybody else who, you know?
You could change that now, I mean.
Yeah.
And these can be changed anytime too.
Right. And then the lottery, I just don't think is necess, I mean, I don't know why we would-
Scratch that.
Do a lottery.
Just scratch the lottery.
And then, yeah, I guess keeping the insurance thing in there is fine. It's just, I'm just saying that that's like that, because there, our coin drops only happen on Route 7, a lot of that's just like, that's stuff that they have to fill out separately with the state anyways. Whomever is doing the coin drop.
So currently, how many are we allowing or?
I don't think we've had. This is, this is why we're trying to come up with a policy because we've, I don't think we had a-
We've never had a policy.
Yeah, and I would say watch out for going into Columbus Day. They used to have quite a few of them back years ago on seven and Columbus Day is way too busy.
It's a busy time.
I wouldn't be in favor of that. Maybe if you wanna make it October 1st or something, that'd be the last day. But we went through that on seven back here 25 years ago and it was terrible. Cause there's so much traffic that weekend, it bogs it up way too much.
Oh yeah, that would not be a good, it's a good weekend for coin dropping.
Well, I know, but then I guess- I guess it was the library then that did it, cause I had, right, didn't we, didn't you Barb, didn't you and I both volunteer for that?
She's not having it this year.
Not this year, but we've done it and the library's done Columbus Day weekend for and brought in a lot of money.
Yeah.
And I don't remember it being like, didn't feel unsafe, I was out there in the middle of the road.
I would, they did, they did a few in front of our farm years ago and during Columbus Day weekend.
Yeah.
Very dangerous.
Right.
So I would, I'd say October 1st is over.
I agree with you, October 1st, yep.
Well, um-
Wanna go five months and have one a month, that's fine. But I wouldn't, I don't think anything outside of May to October 1st is a good idea.
Well, we already amended the agenda to table that, so let's just table the, let's keep, keep it.
Why don't you just leave it? Okay.
Let's just wait till next meeting.
Yeah, then she can have it written down.
Yeah. Okay, so we had to, so we're rescheduling the dog hearing to November 2nd?
Yep.
Okay. And that, well, um, are we safely in the timeframe? I know that there is, okay. I just wanted to make sure, cause I know there's-
That's gonna be noticed.
Okay.
That will be noticed at Kies, on the board, by the library. And I believe I have to put it in the paper as well.
Yeah, you do, yeah.
I just couldn't remember from the time of complaint to the time of a hearing how, how much time, okay.
Yep.
All right, so we're good with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Five thirty?
Yes. I, I guess, right? Five thirty still-
Yeah, you do do it before regular meeting, yeah. All right, so the medical insurance changeover. So we do have, I don't know.
On the small group plans?
What was the question?
We're on the insurance, right?
Yes. So, this, this is the plan that we are currently on.
Mm-hmm.
And this is the plan that it would switch to, this one.
The top one?
Yep.
The gold, is that what you guys circled there? So that's the recommendation of what we should go to from you, correct?
Yeah, from every, everyone's actually looked at this.
Everyone as in all?
Well, Helen and staff.
What do we currently have? Which is the plan we currently have?
Currently you guys have the three HD, HP, gold.
MVP.
MV-
MVP.
Then I'm looking at the wrong chart altogether.
Yeah, it's the bronze, right?
It's on the, it's green, it's the number three.
All right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that's the new rates that are gonna be effective January 1st.
What's our exposure between the two then? Our contributions? What's the difference gonna be?
Well, so thirty-
Like 68% or something, right?
So thirty two, so just as a rough example, so twelve-
We want to look at numbers, right? Alicia, that's what we talked about.
Yeah.
Twelve fifty, so twelve fifty is the HSA amount for the Blue Cross plan. Thirty-two hundred is the amount for the MVP plan.
Okay.
For the family plan, it's sixty-four hundred. Up here it's, it's still the twelve fifty. Or twenty-five, excuse me, twenty-five hundred.
Are you talking about the deductibles or?
Well, you guys have a plan, you have it set up so that you have a contribution into an HSA for the employees.
Yep.
So it's a substantial difference in the amount that you would put into a, an HSA in reduction.
A substantial reduction?
Yes. So if you switch from MVP to Blue Cross-
Right.
You're putting in much less than you would be.
And it has lower deductibles?
Yes. Because what happened is the state approved an 18.6%, I believe. Of four percent increase for MVP plans.
Okay.
Which goes into effect January 1st, which wasn't even thought about in the budget that you folks have right now, actually. So as of January 1, you guys didn't even plan for this.
Okay, so you're saying we're gonna have an 18.6 increase in the plan we're on currently if we stay with it?
If we stay with MVP.
That's correct.
And we're gonna stay even if we go into the other one, is that what you're saying? With our budgeted amount? Cause I think the numbers is what we're on.
You, you probably will do okay.
It won't be quite.
It won't be quite even, but, because they had an increase as well, but their increase was less.
How much will the increase be then?
There was, was 11?
So, I can tell you from like the family plan that I have, because I have three kids at home, what my deductible would be with Blue Cross Blue Shield is 2,500. Right now it's 6,400, of which the town chips in a substantial chunk. Probably what you would contribute to just my family plan would be cut in half. And then your, the rates per month that you pay have gone up slightly from what you're paying now. I think it goes up like a hundred and something dollars a month. But if we go with MVP, it's going up two or $300.
That's a huge difference.
Blue Cross Blue Shield will be less overall for both deductible and for the, the-
Increase.
The increase for the monthly fee, whereas MVP is gonna be that 18.1% complete hike.
I think 11 and 12% is what we've been seeing in the business world coming out of this.
Yeah.
So that's fairly accurate, I think, the increase, 18 sounds-
And these companies, they play this every few years, that's why you end up switching.
Yeah.
You know, in a couple years it's gonna be just the opposite. MVP's gonna come in cheaper and it's gonna go-
Well, the other thing too though, between the, the other difference though between these two, and this is what I've heard from, and I've cut, we've, Ann and I both have taken a poll from all the different employees, we've talked to them all. There's also a difference in coverages when folks have been trying to get services. MVP has been denied, 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 denied. Whereas in the past, when they've gone for services with Blue Cross, they've been much more accommodating and kind. And there hasn't been this constant deny, deny, deny. So even, I mean, let's face it, when you have coverage and every time you go in for a service, if you're not gonna be covered, then what's the point of having insurance? So they're actually very happy if, they'd be happy to know that they could go back to the insurance they used to have. That's been the feedback that we've been receiving from everyone. She's been hearing it and so have I. This came from Helen and, and everyone in the front office as well.
So just to summarize, we're looking at about 11% increase if we go with the Blue Cross Blue Shield instead of 18.
Correct.
And we're gonna have about half as much contribution-
Correct.
To the HM, HMS?
To the HSA?
HSA.
Yep.
Sounds fairly logical to me.
And then, and then in planning for the, you know, when we start getting into the budget conversations, we still have to plan for increases.
Right, right, right.
Talk about the next budget year, but I, you know, I still think that they'll, in my opinion, I still think they're gonna kind of hold steady because I've had conversations with VLCT and I think, I'm not positive, but I think they're gonna start migrating to a one insurance company type scenario, maybe. Maybe.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause I think they're gonna get away from this two thing.
I don't know if one's a good idea either, so.
Well, they, now, well, you know, they do, actually do this in New Hampshire.
Yeah.
It is a one and it works. It depends on how you do it. In New Hampshire, they, they put all the municipalities under the state. All, all municipalities are under the state and because they all join together, it actually works really well. Because you have the-
Or power.
Power of the many. And it evens out the age groups and you have, so you have, you know, the, the older and the younger and everybody's joined together, so it evens out your rates. And it actually works really well. So it, they might do something like that, it might work.
So what do we need, a motion to?
Just one last question before a motion, if you could. What is the date you have to have this by?
They said as soon, as soon as I can this month. So the 31st of October.
31st of October.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead Tom.
I'll just make a motion that we switch from MVP to Blue Cross Blue Shield.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, so ARPA priorities, we have fire and rec. And I see Jen is here for rec. Do you wanna?
So, the three priorities that I have for the rec, and I'm sorry, I don't have quotes, I've been trying to get one. The first one, I do have the quote for the dock, which is the same as I presented last year. And I did write a grant for that, so I'm just waiting to find out about the grant. That quote was about 20, roughly about $20,000 for the dock. The second thing was the resurfacing the tennis and basketball courts. When I met with Vermont Tennis back in December, it was gonna cost about 15,000 just for the tennis courts to be resurfaced. So I'm guessing about 25,000 to resurface both the tennis and the basketball courts. And then the third is dredging the pond at the rec. I asked two different companies several times and never got a quote from them. So I just reached out to Richard Reed, who met me there Saturday, so he's gonna get up a quote for me. So I'm just waiting for that. And that, I really don't have any idea of how much-
Yeah.
That is gonna cost, but.
It's been quite a while since that pond has been-
Been years.
Has it, has it ever been dredged before?
I don't think it's ever been done, I don't remember.
31, I don't remember.
Yeah, it really needs to be taken down, I figure about a foot. Because where it is at the edge of the dock, it's just not, and you know, we have kids diving in there.
Yeah.
To me, it's really not.
Yeah.
I bet it needs more than that, Jen.
Yeah. Yeah, probably a couple of feet.
Those are good ideas.
Yeah.
Those are my three main things right now.
I was in my twenties when they did that, cause I worked on it. It hadn't been done since, so it's long.
You was in your twenties, you said, 19, 20?
In my twenties.
Sorry, this is-
And there was a lot of good feedback for using the money for the rec in our, in our survey.
Yes. The dock, I asked for the grant, I asked, it's a matching grant, so I asked for $10,000. $10,000 we raised. About $2,000 from the auction that we did. And then we figured we'd use $8,000 from the, oh gosh.
Capital account?
Thank you.
Just cause I have that right for it.
Friday.
Okay.
That's all I've got?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that looks good to me.
I know.
All needs to be done.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks Jen.
Yep, thank you. All right, and then the fire department. They have turnout gear, boots, helmets, air packs and ear tanks for a total of 62,000. Is this, I mean, I see that they're looking for 10, is that, um?
It'll be 10 sets.
Sets, okay.
10 sets.
Yep.
How many, how many fire freighters are there altogether?
Forty-two, I think, forty, forty-two, forty-three.
Well, that turnout gear has gone up a lot.
Yeah.
I bought my own back years ago, I wasn't even close to it.
We bought our first coat, what were they, $48?
$48. I think I paid a hundred, but I was in the last year.
Forty-eight bucks we paid. Yeah, fifteen, sixteen hundred dollars just for the coat.
Wow. Wow, wow. Now, um, didn't we just get a new batch of air packs?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And this is for three more.
Oh, yeah.
He said something about, he had, um, he had a grant and he got quite a few all at once. And he said that's good and bad because you get them all at once.
Right.
They're dated, aren't they?
I got that grant. We, we got a grant for fifty-two thousand.
You have to, you have to replace it after seventy years.
So now, yeah, they're all gonna go.
You have to. And that's what kills you.
How many years are they good for?
Well, if you can get seven to ten years, you're stretching it. Yeah.
Can't be over ten, is it?
Stretching it. No.
No.
Hmm, okay.
Yeah, I mean, now they have cameras in them and.
Wow.
You know. They can see, they can see through the smoke. That's phenomenal technology.
I can only imagine, cause I could never see through the smoke when I was.
No, you'd go into a fire and you couldn't see beyond your hand. Yep.
And it can't be recycled?
Nope, and they're all mostly sole source, you know. You've only got certain companies you can buy from.
All right, well, these are two, two very worthy.
Two worthy ones that I would say.
So, add this to our shortlist and then
Oh, definitely.
We gotta sit down doing the math at some point, you know, and see.
Those all look good.
The other, the other thing too, that I, I wanted to make sure that we discussed, and I probably should've said something sooner, the repairs that had to happen, that was on the, that went through today.
The Durango?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That engine. That, is that, that's gonna be ARPA? Because that was not something that was budgeted for.
We did discuss that coming from.
We discussed it, but it was never like official.
We never, yeah, we never formalized that, no.
We didn't official, I didn't know, but we said that's where we take it from.
Yeah.
Sounds like a logical place to do it.
Well, yeah, I mean, we don't have much choice. He doesn't have it in his budget, I know that.
Right, no.
They didn't, it's not something that was budgeted for.
We say thank you, ARPA, ARPA on that one.
Yeah. Well, I'm just, I know, do we wanna do that now?
We should probably, yeah. We don't know what the total cost is gonna be though, right?
Well, yeah, the bill.
For, for, what was it, four thousand?
Well, that was for the, just the engine. Was that the, putting it in everything?
That was the.
Is that the total cost?
No, that's not for the.
No, that's just for the engine, I think.
No, it was supposed to be that.
No.
No?
No.
It's just for the engine, I think.
It was sixty-five.
Yeah, it's gonna be, gonna be seventy, eight thousand dollars total.
Oh, okay, all right.
So I don't wanna put a, just make a motion that the funds would come out of the ARPA.
Okay.
Till we know what the total. That's a motion, yeah. You want to second it?
I'll second that, Tom.
Okay. All right, any more, any more discussion on that? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Right. Yeah, but then it came in a bit higher, since it's higher than what that is. That's why we can't really put a dollar on it right now.
Okay. Oh, all right, so. Got that one out of the way. And then, oh, and the highway, highway vehicle to water sewer.
Yeah, we never did that.
I included those, you know, the minutes from back in twenty-one.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
So it looks like that discussion was made, but it was never official.
Right, okay.
So it just, I don't know, to me, it makes sense if at one point water was gonna get a second vehicle. And highways getting ready to get rid of their vehicle with the new one, that water should have that second vehicle or buy it from them. Now sewer can't buy it.
They don't have any money.
Sewer's broke. But water can afford to buy it. So I, I didn't know if the board wanted to, like, formally approve that, that they do that.
Do we know what the figure is gonna be as far as what he was gonna get for trading in on it? Just so we can transfer funds, that's all.
I don't know the exact dollar. I know it was, it was in the twenties.
I mean, we'd wanna kill it.
See what I remember.
It was twenty-six.
Twenty, a little better.
Something like that.
And the money is already there.
They have the money. Water has the money.
Yeah.
So the plan, the, the plan is to keep the current truck for ten years instead of seven by having this extra truck, right?
That's, yeah, what I remember.
So that, that makes a pile of sense right now.
Yeah.
So. And then they can still use it too.
Or it's in the background. If you still got plow on it, if we need it.
And plowing.
I think it's very logical.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Something we know.
Yep, it's our truck.
It makes sense.
We put a ton of money into it not too long ago, so.
So do you want a motion on this?
Yeah, we shouldn't.
Chair. So I motion that we go ahead and do this, or we approve for them to go ahead and do this.
Second it.
Change of the truck.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. There, make it legal.
I know. A year and a half later, whatever, whenever the last time. All right, new business, annual requests. Start with the Historical Society since they are here.
I think you all have a copy of the letter that our president, who unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, submitted. I won't repeat the whole thing, but basically the Historical Society has never asked for an increase. This is the first. It's history. And we're looking, hopefully, to ten thousand, up from the forty-two, fifty or twenty-five. It was a weird amount before.
Yeah.
Four thousand fifty-two.
Thank you. It was something strange.
And this is since, so it hasn't, it hasn't increased since what year?
Seventeen ninety, I don't know. Ninety-two, I think it was. I don't know when they first started giving
Yeah, okay.
Amount to the, nobody there can remember.
Okay.
Let's put it that way.
Right.
So it was back when some of the previous people who are now deceased were active with the Historical Society.
Yeah, okay.
And it's, it said in there, we've had some horrendous expenses. This has been a bad, 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 bad year for us. The furnace was declared unsafe, had to be replaced. When they were doing that, they inspected the chimney and said the chimney was unsafe. It's only been there since eighteen eighty-one. I don't understand why they declared it unsafe, but they did. So that has been replaced with a stainless steel liner. And our security system gave us a call and said, you're not working anymore. So we had to update the security system to stick with all the new technology and everything else, so that cost money. And then we had heat pumps put in, which have been an absolute blessing so far because there was no air conditioning in the museum. It was impossible. Now that heat pump will take care of that. So that, in essence, is the summary that I think Bill put in the letter. I don't know if you had any questions. Barbara and I just came, in case you had questions.
And then monthly expenses have all gone up, I'm sure, so.
Everything, yes. Insurance, like everything else, it's just.
So could we ask why you went with a ten thousand dollar figure? Is there anything else, and you went from four thousand to ten thousand?
Right, don't know. It was just a kind of a hope that we could maybe get toward that, knowing that, you know.
Okay.
No, there was not a specific item that came in at that, no. And we don't have a staff as far as payroll or anything of that nature. Everything is totally one hundred percent volunteer. So fortunately, we do not have that kind of expense. Everything, all of our expenses are museum, building related.
Capital.
Capital, right, everything. And so it's at the building is eighteen eighty-one.
Do you anticipate this to be a regular annual amount?
I think that's what he's asking for.
Yeah.
If, if, if the board so sees fit, yes, that would be extremely beneficial to us. We do fundraisers as we can. We don't do coin drops. We help others with coin drops. We don't do them ourselves. But we do fundraisers where we can. We have a small endowment. We plug along, but everything is going up.
Yeah.
Majorly. And it's getting to the point where we need a little bit of assistance. And we think we're performing an amazing service for the town by helping the schools and so forth. We get calls from literally all over the country. People are doing their ancestry searches and they find a Pittsburgh connection. We have a woman recently that she was, got to her third great-grandmother. She found her grave. She found, right on the tombstone, the woman was born in Pittsburgh, Vermont. She was proud of that. We can't find her, but we're looking. And we get these requests all the time. Bill met today at the museum, Barbara and Bill with a woman.
Fifth generation and great-grandfather.
Yeah, and so that, and we have information like crazy over there. So we're performing these services. We love doing it. But if you can help a little bit more, we would sure as heck appreciate it.
Mm-hmm. Ten thousand seems pretty fair to me.
Today's, today's world, ten thousand dollars is not a lot of money.
No.
We don't ask will or no.
Yeah.
We, we pay taxes too. We understand the whole way it's done.
Right.
The only question, maybe, I'm behind your people a hundred percent, but the only question that comes to my mind, should this be done at town meeting rather than for the board to make the decision on these appropriations? I mean, I, I'm just asking that question.
I, I don't know. I don't know the answer.
Didn't that come up at last town or one of the last town meetings about?
According to the instructions I was given, if somebody wants an increase in what we've always done for a special appropriation, they're supposed to submit a request to townspeople and get signatures. It's either a hundred and five or a hundred and sixty-five. I have it in my office. But they're supposed to get signatures to try to get enough townspeople to approve it so that then you guys would look at it and say, okay, all of these people back this
Okay.
Request for an increase.
Okay.
I have letters that, in the past, you guys have always mailed special appropriations letters, which kind of seems odd to me. If I'm a company and I'm asking for money, I wouldn't expect a letter saying, okay, we're looking for your information so that we can possibly donate money to you. To me, I would think that the nonprofit would say, okay, Town of Pittsburgh, I would like to request, like the four that are in front of you.
Right.
They, they proactively reached out to me before I sent letters. And I haven't, honestly, I haven't sent the letters yet.
Okay.
Cause it seems weird to me.
Yeah, yeah.
It does.
We want them to come to us.
Letters saying, okay, it's at the time of year where we're starting to put our budget together. How much are we, are you thinking about asking? To me, it sounds wonky.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree.
The only time we go to the voters is if it's a new appropriation. In other words, it's somebody that we have not given to before. Then we ask the voters, do you approve this? And the voters say yes or no. That's when, that's the only reason it goes on the ballot. If there are already something we do, the board does it.
So, but do they need, does the Historical Society need to get signatures in? Cause it's, cause it is a changed amount?
According to the rules I was handed down, yes. I don't know if you as a board wanna change that decision. If you wanna change the way this is done, historically, the assistant to the town managers mailed out letters to all the special appropriations people saying, look, we need to know your dollar amount, your, your financial practices. And there's like three things that they have to give.
Yeah.
You need to give that back to me by a deadline. And then they have an email address to send it to. And then I'm, I'm assuming that I submit it all to the board and say, these are the people that have asked for their reappropriation of money. But to me, it.
Boy, that does sound a little backwards, though.
So I don't know how you as a board wanna handle it.
So Brandon, if you're in Brandon and you want money, every year they have to collect the requisite amount of signatures and it goes on the ballot for all the various different organizations. Pittsburgh historically fund, has funded them through the board.
Through the board.
After the, like Tom says, after the first request. But I do remember historically, the library wanted to up their request one year and that was voted on as, as an item at the town meeting. Extra money was voted on.
I think that's because we, it was enough so that we didn't wanna approve it.
It was a sizable, it was a sizable amount.
Quite a bit.
Okay.
Normally, small amounts we don't.
I thought, Tom, and you might remember this and Joe might, any changes in, like, from last year, if there was five thousand, this year they want ten, then they have to make a presentation to the voters at town meeting.
If it's a, a big amount.
But I thought it was just any change.
I didn't think so, but maybe.
There have been presentations made.
To the board, I know.
At town meeting.
Yeah.
That's why I raised that question.
Yeah, yeah.
Not, you know, I'm, the Historical Society does a hell of a job and I'm behind them all the way. I'm just wondering, and there's others in here that whether is it our job as the select board to go forward a hundred percent with this? Or should, should it be put on the ballot and talked about at town meeting?
Yeah, I think so. On this one.
I'm sure that Bush would probably be able to.
I think, Joe, if they came in and asked for the four thousand fifty-two, we would put it in the budget. There's no, then we don't vote on it, cause it's in the budget.
Right.
But if now, I agree. Now they want ten thousand. It should be on the, on the ballot. And voters say yes. And then next year, it would go in at ten thousand, unless you wanna change it. I think that's the way it's.
So we have to collect the signatures?
You have to get it on the ballot, yeah. I think it's.
That's the way it's specified. Is there a deadline?
No, just before we get them printed up, the, the budget stuff.
Yeah.
Or for the town meeting, right?
I think it's January third is the deadline.
January third?
It's right around January third or thirty.
So do you have much time to get it on the?
Select board can check it and then for the balloting and all that.
Okay.
We wanna stay with what we've been doing until.
Well, yeah, we don't wanna change.
Yeah, yeah. And I don't think you guys would have any problem getting the signatures at all.
We're happy to do it, whichever the procedure is.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm sure you'll get it.
Sorry?
A paper. Get some, signatures on.
Yeah, um, I mean, I don't know if we have a template or if they would just write, type something up themselves that just said.
Helen can probably tell you how to do that.
Yeah.
I talked to Helen.
I know, cause I'm not sure.
They do that all the time out there.
We'll talk to Helen.
Tell you how to do that and go around just, it's like a petition type thing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Alicia, did Anne have something she wanted to add to that?
I don't know. Did you, Anne?
Looked like you had something we're gonna throw out. Throw up, I don't know.
I don't know, but thanks for knowing all this because.
I, I, I read every little piece of paper and, like, I've been trying to keep track of what's supposed to be doing for all the budget process and the town report, cause I'm putting the town report together myself this year with Brenda's assistance.
Uh-huh.
And it's just, I still don't underst, do you guys want me to send out the special appropriations letters or do you wanna just see who?
No, I'd say, I think, see, see who comes to us.
I think they should come to us, yeah.
I know.
Don't send us the list. We'll, we'll come to you.
Well, you have, like I said, these four have, and I've had another one reach out to me, which I think is great.
That's proper, yeah.
To me, it seems weird to send the letters out saying, hey, we're doing our budget.
And we have quite a list.
We have, we have an extensive list. And I, no offense to some of those organizations, but I've lived around here for eighteen years and there's some of them I've never heard of. So I haven't heard of them and it's eighteen years. There might be a.
Kinda wonder how we're benefiting possibly, you know.
And, you know.
Well, wasn't there one?
There's one that's actually.
There was one that was actually a duplication.
It's not a duplication. It doesn't exist anymore.
Was it a, none, doesn't exist?
We, it, so it merged, the company merged with another one.
Okay.
So somebody's actually getting two donations the last two years because they merged in twenty twenty.
Yeah.
And it's being sent to a P O box that's not, so it's not trackable for location, but if you put in Google, you put in the name of the company, it comes up that it was.
Well, we wanna know who that is, cause we know that's right, that one, that's for sure, until they come forward.
So to me, to me, it makes more sense. I, I track everything.
Well, thank you.
I, I, I research everything. If I don't know what it is, I, I'm trying to find out what it is.
Yep.
So to me, if we're not reaching out, they have to reach out to us. We're more likely to weed out some of these that are not.
Absolutely.
Not on the up and up. I guess that's the best way to phrase it.
Would you like a motion on that, that we change that?
Policy type?
Yes, yes.
Make a motion that from now on, we accept requests for donations rather than mail out requests for them to send us their requests.
I'll second that, or Joe.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
To our attention.
I know, yeah, really, thank you.
At least we worked that.
That's over eighty thousand dollars.
That's good.
For the appropriation that are.
Right.
The McClure Library is a good chunk of that, but I think there are some that through this process will be weeded out.
Yeah.
I have no idea what the rest of the state does. I mean, there's a lot of towns in the state.
It's all over the place.
Probably all have different policies.
Yeah.
It is all over the place. There's some towns that picked five and those are the five that they do. And there's some towns that.
Well, that's, I had, well, a couple of years ago, and this kinda came up too, cause we had so many. I looked at some of the surrounding towns. Our list is like three times as long as most of the other towns. Giving two checks to one, I don't know what we're doing.
I, I understand your vote and, and all that, but I'm wondering, there may be an organization, let's say, a regional ambulance service.
Regional ambulances sent to order.
Yeah, they're on our agenda for tonight. Yeah.
If it's somebody getting a chunk of money.
Pick somebody else.
Yeah, pick someone else.
Yeah, pick somebody else.
McClure Library is one we might wanna reach out to and say, hey, we're not sending, I mean, they should know anyway.
Yeah, Shelley will be on that.
There are some services that you give money to in annual cases that do provide a lot of services for the citizens of the town. And I'm just, and I agree with your vote. They should be asking you, but I think you should, would be.
Why don't we, next meeting, go through the list?
Send them a two-minute warning or something.
That's a great idea.
Send them an ult, say.
Why don't we go through the list next meeting and see if there's anybody on there that we should reach out to.
Can you get that list for then our next meeting?
Who is on the appropriation? Who is on the appropriations?
It's, it's right in the town report, and I actually have it taped up anyway, so I
Good idea, Tom.
Let's, let's look at that.
Actually, you know what they did in, in Maine? Is we would post a notice in the paper?
That's like asking them to, to get money, that I want money, but
I think Tom's idea is good. Let's just go through the list, make sure, which said, maybe there's some little organization you wouldn't know, and it's
Right, and that we should be doing, and if we kick them off, then that's not good either.
You know, and all we need from the Historical Society is that
That letter.
Signature's a letter.
Yep.
Put it right on.
Okay, that sounds good.
Thank you.
Will you sign it?
Sure. We'll be the first five to sign it.
I know. All right. So next, we have the Vermont Family Network.
I, I didn't see any issue with this, it was a five hundred dollar donation, and the amount of work they do, and the length of time they've been doing it, I, I see no issue here.
Are they already on our, our appropriation list, I wonder?
I believe they are, yeah, yeah.
All four of these are currently on the
There's gotta be a lot of them, right?
Well, and then also, all right, so Advocacy Resources Community, ARC, which they seem to do the stair, do the similar, they provide similar services.
Request for fourteen hundred?
In, in this information that we have in our packet, it seems like there was two organizations that have merged, in my
Yeah, Vermont Family Network, it says that, that name changed, right?
They joined in with somebody else, yeah. So are we currently supporting both of them individually? I mean, it seems like that ought to be kind of re, rerouted, pulled together, maybe, and maybe I'm wrong.
I can research it for next meeting, I know that several have merged, I know, in the last two or three years, or something like that.
I can look for Vermont Family Network to see who they merged with.
They may or may not notify it.
Why don't we table the stuff that we
We're gonna have that written, everything over, everything all at one time.
I agree.
Well, I think we could act on the ones we have requests on, or no? I mean, that, they are actually formal requests, right?
Right, but it sounds like the, like the Historical Society is gonna have to go through a different process of the signatures and that sort of thing, 'cause they're asking for a different amount. And then ambulance, I'm not sure if it's a different amount.
It is not a different
No, that's
It's the same.
It's the same.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that is one I would feel comfortable acting on, because that's
Yeah.
Yeah, the A R C gave us a pretty good breakdown of what they have
Yeah.
Asking for, I think all three of these are
They're basically asking us for a recent
For what they normally got.
They've had, it's what appears to me.
Yep.
And that's a whole different ballgame. Last year, when Dave was here, we had some discussion, you remember, Tom, whether we had, didn't we have a discussion with Dave about and even going way back when Dave Markowski was on the board? Back in my early days of being on the board, so
My early days.
We talked about that same subject
Yeah, we did.
How to handle it, I don't remember if we made any changes or not, I don't tell you.
I don't think we did, as long as they didn't ask for more, we, we kind of went along with what they wanted. And we asked that they would at least do what they're doing here, send us the letter, or somebody come in from the organization and give the proposal as to why they still needed the money. That's what we've normally been doing. Anyway, I don't have a problem with these.
Sorry? We may as well, if we're gonna, if we're gonna look into this in depth, you know, next meeting.
All at one time. So I'll tape, make a motion, we table this at the next meeting.
Okay. Any, a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have no liquor board this evening, and no cannabis board, so that
Dang.
And no executive for the first time in
No, dang.
A zillion years. So we're adjourned.